Heavenly Father, thank you for this glorious day. And thank you for the rights and freedoms that we so richly enjoy. And we thank you for the opportunity to meet this evening. We ask for your strength, guidance, and wisdom in our deliberations. And we ask that are all treated with dignity and respect. In your son's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We do have a quorum this evening. We'll go to next item on the agenda announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next meeting in August only has one thing on the agenda, and that's comprehensive plan work session. According to our schedule, we had planned to originally have a work session today, but because of the number of public hearings this evening, I decided not to include a work session. So it turns out that our next meeting is very light. In fact, it looks like we'll only be able to discuss work sessions that day for the comprehensive plan.
Perfect.
The other announcement I had is a community meeting. This is a rezoning application. The request is for 67 single-family detached units. The proposal is called Old Plank Subdivision located at 7611 and 7613 Old Plank Road. And the community meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Thursday, at 7:00 PM at Tabernacle United Methodist Church.
Any other announcements? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, review and approval of the minutes of June 20th, 2018. I suspect everybody's had a chance to review. Any comments or questions on the minutes? Any corrections? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
No moves.
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to the next item, unfinished business. I don't think we have any. We'll move on to the public hearing, the continuation of the public hearing of R-17-0011.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. To recap this case, at the June 20 public hearing, the applicant had submitted proffers inside the 14-day requirement as noted by the county code. The public hearing was opened and continued to tonight. So I will give my presentation for members of the public that may not have been present then as we move forward. This is a request to rezone 9.62 acres from rural RU to planned development housing, PDH 2, with proffers for the construction of a 19-single-family home detached project on parcels 20, 21, 21, 20, -1, 2, and 3. The property is located on the northwest quadrant of Old Plank and Endora Drive with 618 plus or minus feet of frontage on Old Plank and 207 feet plus or minus feet of frontage on Endora Drive. The property lies in an area associated with the Chancellor of Battlefield. To date, no field study has been conducted to determine if any historic resources are present. There is an existing home on the corner that will be demolished. A community meeting was held in 2016, and citizens present raised concerns about traffic on Old Plank and at the intersection. They also raised objections to any connection to Ashley Park. Staff has received several calls regarding the rezoning, and each of the citizens expressed concern about the current traffic conditions on Old Plank and at the intersection. The applicant has proffered, offered proffers to help offset any potential impact the proposed project would have in accordance with the Code of Virginia guidelines. Staff does recommend approval of the request. This zoning map notes the zoning of the adjacent subdivision of Ashley Park, which is RU, and the properties to the north and west are also zoned RU, while the properties to the south and east are zoned R1. The commercially zoned parcels in red that you see to the north are along Route 3. This aerial shows the subject parcel outlined in red and the dominant development pattern of the area of single-family residential development with a church identified in orange and the Chancellor Community Center in yellow on the south side of Plank Road. Ashley Park, the adjacent subdivision, which is highlighted in blue, currently has 244 lots with a density of 2.4 units per acre with an average lot size of 16,000 square feet. Ashley Park south, across from Ashley Park, has 79 lots with a density of 2.2 units per acre with an average lot size of 21,000 square feet. The Grantwood subdivision, noted in purple, is 85 lots with a density of 2.7 units per acre with an average lot size of 16,000 square feet and has an entrance approximately 450 feet east of the intersection of Old Plank and Endora. Falcon Ridge, which is adjacent to Grantwood on the south side of Old Plank, is 191 lots with a density of 2.3 units per acre with an average lot size of 14,000 square feet. This is the applicant's GDP and the proposed layout. The PDH 2 district has an open space requirement of 30%. This layout has a 31% of open space around the perimeter of the project. And there is a recorded conservation easement on the western parcel boundary in this area here between the proposed project and Ashley Park. The proposed lots range in sizes from 10,000 square feet up to 15,000 square feet. The project will be served by public water and sewer. And as you can see, the project will initially have a single access onto Old Plank Road with two cul-de-sacs. The northern cul-de-sac terminates at the project boundary in accordance with the VDOT SSAR regulations. The applicant has requested and was granted a waiver to making the connection to T-Side Drive along Ashley Park. The Virginia Department of Transportation also commented that at the time of site plan review, the applicant will have to conduct length turn lane warrants and analysis for right and left turn lanes. The streets will have sidewalks internal to the project and along the frontage of the project. The entrance, as shown, is approximately 500 feet west of the intersection of Endora and Old Plank and lines up with the driveway between the church and a single-family residence. As noted, many of the concerns raised by citizens relate to traffic and the level of service at the intersection during peak travel times. County staff and the board are aware of the issues and have set aside funds in the capital improvements plan to address the design of the intersection. The applicant has proffered the dedication right of way along the project frontage to assist with any future road improvements along Endora and Plank. The project will have, as I noted, will have a single access on Old Plank. Currently during the AM and PM traffic hours, the intersection operates at a failing level of service. Endora Drive currently has 7,750 daily trips, and Old Plank has 12,520, 52 daily trips. The proposed improvement at the intersection is a roundabout, which will allow free-flowing movement of traffic, eliminating the current stop condition, which facilitates the backups at the current three-way stop. Since the last hearing date, the applicant asked Remy Kemp to perform an analysis on the intersection level of service with a roundabout. The analysis indicates that the roundabout will improve level of service to a level of service of A. The county's traffic engineer concurs that at minimum, the level of service improvement would be to a B. The sheriff's office reported that they were told of nine accidents at the intersection, and the sheriff also reported that they had conducted 40 traffic stops at this location. This is a view looking north. The van there, the truck in the picture, is headed north on Endora Drive. The subject property is identified by the arrow. This is a view looking west on Old Plank. The subject property there is on the right, the community center on the left. This view is looking back east at the intersection identified by the stop sign, and the arrow identifies the subject property. Again, looking west with the subject property identified by the arrow. And if you can see in the very far distance here, this car is at the entrance to Ashley Park. Just for some perspective. This is looking directly into the subject parcel where the entrance into the project would be located. The Spotsylvania County Comprehensive Plan presents a long-range vision for the county. The plan sets forth principles, goals, policies, and implementation techniques that will guide the development activity within the county. The proposal is located within the primary development boundary. Lands within the limits of the primary development boundary are intended to develop with higher density, residential densities, and more intensive non-residential uses than outside of the primary development boundary. This area of the county has a low-density residential designation on the future land use map, a designation reserved for single-family attached and detached residences typical in a suburban area with a possible overall density of four units per acre. This proposal as designed has a density of 1.9 units per acre. The Ashley Ridge proposal, considering use and density, is consistent with the low-density residential land use designation envisioned for the area. The applicant has submitted proffers. The development will conform with the generalized development plan. The property will be limited to 19 single-family lots. They are dedicating the right-of-way along Endora and Old Plank. And the applicant has proffered contributions to offset impact on the project's capital facilities to the tune of $208 per unit. These proffers are consistent with the new code requirements of Virginia and are deemed acceptable. The applicant provided a financial impact analysis that estimated the assessed value of the new homes to be about $391,000. Homes assessed at this value will generate revenues that will exceed county expenditures for new citizens. Staff ran an analysis with assessed values of comparable homes valued at about $261,000, and at this value, homes do not generate revenues that would exceed the expenditures for new citizens. The proposed project is projected to generate 11 students that will attend Wilderness Elementary, Freedom Middle, and Riverbend High. Key findings in favor: The proposed project is appropriately located within the primary development boundary and is consistent with the future land use map. The applicant has proffered $208 per unit to offset the impacts on capital facilities. The applicant has also proffered the dedication of right-of-way and fee simple along Old Plank and Endora. The project as proposed provides 2.9 acres of open space around the perimeter of the project, which exceeds the ordinance requirement. And the proposed project is consistent with the existing development pattern of single-family homes of the surrounding neighborhoods. The findings against: Based on the assessed value of comparable residential units, the county model indicates that the revenues generated would not exceed the projected impact. There is no evidence has been provided to verify the presence or lack thereof of any significant historic resources on the site. And the project generates additional vehicle trips to a network that currently operates below a level of service during peak hour. So our recommendation, the applicant has offered a right-of-way dedication. It's consistent with the comp plan. It exceeds the minimum requirements for open space. It is consistent with the development pattern. Therefore, based on these findings, staff recommends approval of R-1711. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question for you. In the executive summary, you state that the current, I guess with the current level of service is F, but with the right-of-way dedication and the proposed future improvement to the intersection, that level of service goes to at least a B, and that is supported by our traffic engineer.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mike?
Leo, do we have any recent examples in the county where an intersection improvement has gone from a level F to a B or an A? Just so we can have an idea of, this is what to expect. Because I can give an arbitrary letter based on values and road trips to actually see it and know, hey, this is a failing intersection. It was improved. This is what we can expect. Because I think that would be helpful. I just can't think of anything, especially not without a roundabout in the county, that I can think of that recently had a massive improvement to improve the level of service.
Mr. Medina, the only one that comes immediately to mind is probably the intersection of Smith Station and Courthouse Road where the additional turn lanes were added. Now, I can't give you the value of the improvement there, but I can tell you there's certainly an improvement at that intersection during peak hours because of that additional capacity.
Okay. And another follow-up on that. Was the study that we and the applicant used for the roundabout, was that a single lane? We're just looking at a single lane here, not a double lane?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Leon? My apologies. At this point, we'll go back into the public hearing part of this. This, I want to remind everybody, this is a continuation of the public hearing that was started at the last meeting. If you spoke at the last public hearing meeting, you will not have an opportunity to speak this evening. This is for new speakers only. The same rules apply. You will have three minutes. Once you come to the podium, I would ask that you state your name and your voting district. If you don't know your voting district, we will certainly take your address. The green light on the podium will start at three minutes. And when you have one minute left, it will turn to yellow. And when it turns to red, I would ask that you wrap up your comments, please. So with that, do we have anybody new that wishes to speak this evening?
Mr. Chairman, the only two people that signed up have spoken previously.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this application this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I would ask the applicant if he wishes to address any of the previous comments.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission. My name is Chris Hornung, and I am the applicant on this matter. I am representing the owner. Samer Shalabi is here as well, who is a trustee of the owner entity. The only thing I wanted to mention, I think Leon did a great job, but as far as backups, the analysis that was done to kind of tell you what going from a level of service D or F to an A or a B, the traffic engineer estimated that the delay, which is the backup at the intersection, would be reduced from about a 330-foot queue down to about a 100-foot queue. So what that means is going from what you have today at times in the morning, there could be as many as, I guess that would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about 30 cars backed up, or 20, 25 cars, down to somewhere in the neighborhood of about five to six of those peak hours. So you're still going to come up the traffic circle. You're going to have to slow down, delay, to go around it. But it should not be backing up all the way down Old Plank the way that it does today. With that, I don't have any other responses, comments that were made previously, but if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, the analysis, Chris, that was done with a roundabout.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Very well. At this point, I would like to make a motion to approve this application. That's based on the fact that the level of service improvement at that intersection is much needed. It's much improved, and certainly something that we need there at that intersection. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions stated in the application.
Second.
Any other questions or comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So motion passes. Moving on to the next application. R-16-009.
Do I do this now?
At this point, yes, I would take your statement.
Okay.
Before you start, Kim.
Okay. I wish to recuse myself from the discussion and vote related to the rezoning request submitted by Palmer's Creek LLC and Spotsylvania Land Company LLC due to a conflict of interest. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Let's recognize that Ms. Carter recuses herself. Kimberly, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request to rezone approximately 25 acres from Commercial 3 and Rule to mixed-use 5 with proffers to allow for a maximum of 400 multifamily units and a maximum of 40,000 square feet of commercial uses. The project is known as Palmer's Creek. The property is located on the west side of Jefferson Davis Highway, approximately one mile south of the Spotsylvania Parkway and Route 1 intersection. With the current zoning of Commercial 3, the property could develop by right with a number of office and commercial uses. Staff is recommending approval with the proffer statement included in your packet dated June 4th, 2018. Here's a zoning map with the property highlighted in, or outlined in red. You can see this is located along the Route 1 corridor. You have a good bit of commercial zoning to the north there. Rural zoning still remaining to the south. There's industrial, there's mixed-use, and Planned Development Housing District. This large swath of purple here is the Planned Development Housing District. That was the property rezoned for Heritage Woods. It's still vacant, undeveloped. Here, to the north here is the mixed-use zoning. That's the Jackson Village rezoning that was a couple of years ago. And then, of course, immediately across the street here with this industrial is the pick apart site. And you can see that a little better here on this aerial image. The property is composed of two separate tax parcels. There is a proposed boundary line adjustment where this project is picking up some acreage here from the back and then giving a little bit of acreage here to the north to the adjacent property. And as I was saying, this property here to the north, that's commercial zone. It's still vacant. And then here's some commercial zoning immediately to the south. That is a developed property, and currently, I believe that's a contractor's office site. Here's a color version of the applicant's GDP. You can see here along the frontage, this is four acres of the project shaded here in red that would be developed for the commercial uses, up to 40,000 square feet. To the rear, shaded and tan, these are the apartment buildings. Buildings 1, 2, and 3 will be developed as the first phase of the development. These would be four stories in height. This would also include the clubhouse and the pool and associated parking. The second phase would include this building 4. Building 4 is proposed to be five stories in height. This property slopes to the back, so that extra story with this building is expected to appear in scale with the other buildings from the right-of-way. Access to the development, there would be two primary points of access. The northern one, this will be a public road extending into the property, and it sets up for a future connection with the property to the north with future development. A private access road will run parallel to Route 1 between the commercial project component and the residential component and extends to the south property line here, again, to provide for a future interparcel connection. And again, this private road would extend to the south to set up for another future parcel connection, interparcel connection. The red dashed lines are denoting where the internal sidewalks of the project would be provided. The blue dashed line here is a paved trail that would extend from the sidewalks into the open space and around the stormwater facility, which I think is intended to be more of a feature of the project. There will be a minimum of five acres of open space preserved with this project. That's more than double what the mixed-use district requires. Highlighted in, or identified with the yellow stars in this location, this location, and this location, those are three potential options to construct a bus shelter. The applicant has proffered to construct a bus shelter. Fredericksburg Regional Transit, they did review this application. Those, either of those three sites would be appropriate. So if this project meets the warrants to bring Fred to this location, then they would be party to that. But those three locations were pre-approved by Fred, and they did review the specs for the bus shelter and the costs associated with that. So in the meantime, until Fred comes, those bus shelter, the bus shelter could serve for the schoolchildren that are living in the residential component. The applicant is proffering a streetscape within these internal streets. This is going to be an enhanced landscaping package that they're proffering that would be between the sidewalks and the buildings and the patio areas. This, again, is beyond what the mixed-use district would require. The applicant did complete a traffic impact analysis that was reviewed by both our county traffic engineer and VDOT. Route 1 in the vicinity of the project, that portion of Route 1 carries approximately 21,300 vehicles per day. The traffic signals on Route 1 are coordinated and operate on a cycle length of 130 seconds in both the AM and at the PM. Some of the individual left-turn movements in this area fail, but the overall level of service for this segment is a level of service C or D. At build-out, Palmer's Creek Development is expected to generate 2,271 vehicles per day, with the majority of those coming from the commercial component. It's important to note that this would be a less intense traffic generator than their by-right development would be. VDOT has a new criteria for traffic signals along our primary arterials in order to improve the mobility and reduce congestion along those arterials. Rather than simply meeting the warrants, an applicant must demonstrate that none of their design alternatives, the traffic signal design alternatives, are appropriate. Palmer's Creek, the traffic impact analysis did demonstrate that some of the criteria for a traffic signal was met, but the installation of a traffic signal in this location would increase the delay of, for motorists along Route 1 corridor. So with that, they had to go back and look at these design alternatives. One that was selected is what they're calling a modified continuous green tea intersection, which basically is eliminating or limiting these left-turn movements. Here's the northern entrance design. This is the main entrance to the development. And what you'll see is that this left-turn movement exiting from the development would be a two-phase maneuver. The motorists would have to wait for a gap in the southbound traffic and then work their way over into this slotted acceleration lane. And they would use this acceleration lane to gain speed and then merge into the northbound through lanes. There would be a right-in, right, and a right-in and right-turn lanes into the development. There will be a right turn out of the development, but there are no left-turn movements entering the project permitted at this entrance.
Kim, is there any delineation or delineators for that 560-foot acceleration lane from the main lines?
There's going to be a raised median from this point, 560 feet back.
That?
And then the rest of this is just painted markings.
So show me, show me again where the acceleration lane is.
This is the, this is the acceleration lane. Here's the raised median.
Got it. Thank you.
This also includes a left-turn lane for vehicles going to the Banks property, the pick apart site.
All right. Now I'm confused again, so.
Sorry.
So coming out of, coming out of the development, the left turn.
Coming out of the development, you're going to come out. You're going to take a left. These pavement markings are there to help direct you into the acceleration lane so you don't jump all the way over into that through lane.
Okay, but then there's no delineators except for striping between that acceleration lane and the main lanes?
Yes, sir. That's right.
Okay.
Just the paint. The southern entrance design will have a right-in with right-turn lane and taper, a right-out. However, there will be no left-turn movement exiting the development. All of the left-turn exiting traffic will go to the northern entrance. There will be a left-turn lane into the development. So the only way to take a left turn in is from the southern entrance. The only way to take a left turn out is going to be from the northern entrance. This is new. This will be the first in the state of Virginia. And so we've been working closely with the applicant. VDOT's been working closely with the applicant to look at those pavement markings, the medians. This is definitely going to be a learned movement, much like a roundabout was a number of years ago. With this design, the corridor's level of service will remain unchanged. All of the through movements on Route 1, the north and south entrances, will operate at a range of level of service B through D. Also important to note is that, should this property develop by right, this same scenario with the design alternative is what would be required. Staff analyzed the proposal for consistency with the comprehensive plan and levels of service, goals and policies of the plan, and found the property consistent with respect to land use, transportation, public facilities, specifically sheriff's office, water and sewer, library, and solid waste. Historic resources, there are none on the property. And natural resources, there are wetlands and RPA on the property, but all of the development. And natural resources, there are wetlands and RPA on the property, but all of the development avoids any impacts to those. There are identified impacts to several public facilities. And the applicant, under the state proffer law, an applicant can mitigate their impact on those facilities if they meet certain criteria. And one is that there is a capacity issue, that they have a direct impact on capacity, and that there's an actual planned improvement in our CIP for a facility that would expand capacity. This project will generate approximately seventy-three students. That would be thirty-eight elementary, fifteen middle school, and twenty high school students. This project is districted for Parkside Elementary, Spotsylvania Middle School, and Massaponics High School. Both Spotsylvania Middle and Massaponics High School are currently over capacity. Under state law, the applicant cannot provide a cash contribution to mitigate their impact on the school facilities. When we get to proffers, I'll get into a little bit more detail. They have attempted to address their impact to the extent that they can. The project will be served by Fire Rescue Station Eight. Fire Station Eight does have capacity. However, the county's not meeting their level of service standard for the ratio of stations per capita. So with that impact, there is a countywide project. It's the Fire Training and Logistics Center. The applicant has provided a cash proffer to mitigate their impact. Same goes for Parks and Recreation. We're not meeting our level of service standard for recreational facilities per capita. So the applicant has provided a cash proffer to mitigate their impact for that as well. The applicant provided a fiscal impact analysis that projects the project will generate a total of over four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in revenue annually at full buildout. Staff conducted our inseparate analysis using the county's model, which admittedly is a conservative estimate. Our model projects that they'll generate fifty-nine thousand dollars annually at full buildout. While the two projections are different, they are both trending positively. And that would be with both the residential and the commercial component together.
Excuse me, may I ask a question? How long would it take for this build out? What's your estimate?
Let's ask the applicant what their, what their build out goal is.
Thank you.
The applicant has submitted a proffer statement dated June fourth for the Planning Commission's consideration. The proffers include development in conformance with the GDP that we just presented. Maximum of forty thousand square feet of permitted mixed-use five commercial space. And the commercial buildings will be one story in height. They will be constructed in conformance with the architectural rendering before you on the screen. And they also intend to have a coordinated sign band along the frontage of these buildings.
That is the view from Route One?
Yes, sir.
And the view from the back, do you have a, do we have anything in?
I don't have an elevation for the back, no, sir. Moving on, the residential units will be limited to a maximum of four hundred multifamily units. And of the four hundred units, only a hundred and, I think that's a typo actually, I think it's only a hundred and thirty units will include three bedrooms. This is the proffer that I was referencing. The value here is by limiting the number of three bedrooms, that relates to how the county calculates their impacts on public facilities. Public facility impacts are typically calculated on an average household size by unit type. So in this case, by a multifamily unit type. So in reality, if a higher bedroom count could have increased impacts. So by limiting the number of the three bedrooms, they're attempting to, to control additional or increased impacts on public facilities.
So buildings one, two, and three will be completed before four and five start? Is that?
Uh, one, two, and three, there's, and there's a total of four buildings. So the phase one would be buildings one, two, and three, which will be four stories in height. Phase two would be building four, which will be five stories in height. The residential component would be in conformance with the architectural renderings provided in front of you. The applicant is proffering to dedicate right of way along Route One. And the project will have the two points of access that we just reviewed on the GDP. They will be providing interparcial connections to both the north and the south and dedicating any necessary right of way and or easements to accommodate those connections for future development. They have agreed to construct the bus shelter prior to the issuance of the occupancy permit for the first residential building. They are providing the pedestrian connectivity with the trails and the internal sidewalks. That does include an asphalt trail, a ten-foot asphalt trail along the frontage of the project. That trail is consistent with other development that's going on along the corridor with Jackson Village, for example, and as well as the commuter lot that is just north at Commonwealth Drive. They will have an asphalt trail as well. And this is an illustrative image of the streetscape package that we talked about on the GDP with the enhanced landscaping. The proffer gives us more detailed language as far as number of type of plantings. The applicant has proffered a minimum of five acres, which again is more than twice the required amount for the mixed use district. And they have provided a cash contribution totaling forty thousand four hundred and four dollars, which comes to a hundred and one dollars per unit. This is, of course, to mitigate their impacts permitted under the state proffer law for from facilities and parks and rec. Key findings identified in favor include the proposal is generally consistent with the mixed-use land designation goals and policies laid out in the comprehensive plan, as well as the density and intensity of development intended for land within the primary development boundary. The development creates multiple opportunities for interparcial connections with the adjacent properties. And the proposed northern access is designed as a public road, which will also provide access to the adjacent property to the north with future development. The applicant has proffered cash contributions to mitigate their impacts on capital facilities as permitted under the state proffer law. And both the county and the applicant's fiscal impact analysis expects the project to generate positive revenue for the county at full buildout. Identified findings against include that the property is currently zoned to allow commercial development. The proposal allows for residential uses on the property and reduces the commercial potential with no commitment to minimum commercial square footage or phasing. So they have, they have proffered a maximum amount of commercial space. They haven't proffered a minimum amount. Also, the Palmer's Creek Development will generate additional students and will further impact capacity at both Spotsylvania Middle School and Massaponics High School, which are both currently over capacity. Based on the proposal's consistency with the comprehensive plan and levels of service on balance, you know, obviously noting the, the capacity issues with schools, staff is recommending approval based on the findings in favor with the proffered conditions. And this concludes my presentation. The applicant is here and they have a presentation for you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
If I may, I want to make a couple of comments. I've already talked to Wanda about getting us a corrected date, a corrected piece of paper with the school populations. It's been, information came to me today that particularly in the high schools where you say they're over, over capacity, there are large amounts of these children don't even attend this campus. They're schooled elsewhere. And I've asked Wanda to give us a list of where they are and what the true amount of children are in these schools when the school is operating. Because I think this is misleading information. I've got three calls on it today. I think we've reviewed in our capacity. It's been, what is it, several years down the road before we even looked to build a school here, is that correct? But these numbers reflect something else. It gives somebody an argument for another case. So I'd like to have a correct population. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, one other thing? Oh, never mind, I'm sorry. That's new business, I'll put that off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Is there someone here from VDOT that can talk to us about this in and out new design that will be the first in Virginia to have? I'm not certain whether we should be honored or scared to death.
There's no one from VDOT. I'm happy to help, to start answering questions. And then Doug Morgan, our transportation planners here as well, to help as well.
Are there other states that have this? I mean, I'm just curious about.
North Carolina, I believe, has that. An example of this particular one was, I think Yellowstone. But there are other examples of this. I think the closest is, is North or South Carolina.
Is this something new that I guess VDOT is going to be implementing?
This is new and they, they have implemented it. It'll be on our arterials, so Route One, Route Three is where we're going to see it. The intent is that these multiple traffic signals is stopping the flow of traffic on those arterials and to keep it moving safely and avoid congestion. It's, it's trying to eliminate those when possible. That does not mean that this improvement as designed now is going to be a permanent improvement. As the property develops to the north or to the south, this project most likely is going to warrant a traffic signal. It just depends. Or there may be another design alternative that is appropriate at that time. But in my discussions with VDOT, you know, this, they, they in no way said this would be a permanent situation. It just depends on how future development occurs and if and when those warrants are met.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Kim? Very well, we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Sherman Patrick. I am here this evening representing not one developer, but two, in fact. Mr. Virginia Properties is the, the commercial developer on this project. With a mixed-use community, you need a commercial developer and you need a residential developer. And so in this instance, we have Virginia Properties, as I said, is the commercial developer. And Bonner Venture Realty Group is the residential developer. And they will be moving together on this project and sharing many of the costs and design features that are associated with the proposal that you'll see more of this evening. Ms. Palmetto did a very good presentation, is very thorough. I have prepared my presentation not realizing how thorough hers might be. I apologize if I repeat anything. I will try to skip through some of the slides that I have so that you don't hear the same type of information over and over. But I do warn you that some of my slides look very similar to the ones that she showed to you already. Okay, I, thank you. This is a vicinity map, a site and area map. It shows the location of Palmer's Creek right in the center of the, of the screen. You'll notice I ninety-five corridor off to the right-hand side, it's very apparent. The Route One corridor is running from top to bottom, right through the middle of the photograph. Across the street roughly is the pick apart facility. And to the north is also is the, the flea market that's well-known on Route One, just trying to give you some familiar landmarks in that vicinity. And then further north, there is the, the Orchard Ridge Apartment Project that is currently under construction and near completion and was part of the Jackson Ridge rezoning. Next slide, please. This is the existing zoning map for the area. It is, you'll see the, the undeveloped project to the left in purple that Ms. Palmetto mentioned. It is, a lot of that is environmental area, a lot of it's flood plain. There's some RPA in there as well. And it does touch on the rear part of Palmer's Creek. Palmer's Creek has approximately eight hundred feet of frontage on Route One. And it is, it is red also with the other zonings that are shown here, but it has a heavy black line around it to show you where the boundaries are. Next slide, please. This is the existing long-range future land use plan for the area. As you can see, mixed use is very much encouraged by the county. The reason that mixed use is attractive is because when you have the commercial and the residential together, the, they tend to, they're, they're, I hate this word, but it's, they're, they're synchronized. They, they provide, they provide benefits that, to one another, and they provide benefits to the county in the terms, in terms of balancing out and in this case generating a positive tax revenue basis for the county. So in serving the residential, what the commercial does is it provides convenient locations where people can go and get essentials and convenience items and, and to have services for like doctor's offices and things that you routinely do without having to commute longer distances. And so thereby they reduce traffic impacts. And they also increase walkability, which is one of the goals of the mixed-use designation. And then in terms of tax, positive tax revenue, generally speaking, commercial pays a lot more in taxes than it demands in services, and so you get a net benefit. There was some mention of the, the study that we had prepared by Dr. Stephen Fuller, the, the founder of the Stephen Fuller Institute at George Mason University. And his conclusion was that this project, when built out, would be, would have a net revenue positive effect of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand plus per year to the county, as opposed to the county's calculation, which was fifty-nine thousand. We, we got this information a little bit late from the county. We, we would like to know more about how the county's numbers were derived. And the, and the way that these things can be different, so different, is if you assume a different cost of construction. And we have a, a very good product that I, I'll show you some photos of as we get further into the presentation. And we believe the reason for the difference there is because of some of the assumptions that may have gone into the model. They naturally would have used historic information, historic property values, and, and we have probably indicated that we're providing a little higher quality product. And because of that, there's going to be a difference because a large part of the revenue that you receive from commercial development and from residential development is the value of the construction that goes into the project. Next slide, please. We thought it was relevant to let you know that the closest residential neighborhood that exists is fourteen hundred feet, over fourteen hundred feet from this one. It is the South Point Project Development that is off to our southwest. Next slide, please. This is the general development plan that is proffered with this rezoning application. We have the colorized versions also that Kimberly showed you a little bit earlier. But this one shows you very exactly what, what we have in our proffered conditions. We have over twelve hundred feet of frontage improvements that are being built on this. Even, I mentioned before that we had eight hundred feet of frontage. Along with the medians, lane widenings, and transitionings that will have to be constructed to meet VDOT standards, there will be twelve hundred feet of improvements across this. That's getting close to double the amount of frontage that we have. Also, you can see that we're building a cul-de-sac street into the property that will be shared with the adjoining property to the north. And the purpose of that is to try to define and, and reduce the number of intersections on Route One, which brings us to one of the VDOT's goals that goes hand in hand with the concern and questions that we have over their new design. It used to be that we had to prepare, prepare a traffic signal warrant analysis. And we started off this project doing just that. We got about a year into the process and, and we were advised that what we, VDOT no longer requires a warrant analysis, they require a justification analysis. So in their justification, they offer twelve to fourteen different alternative designs that you can use in place of a traffic signal, depending on the volume of traffic that you have, just like a traffic circle will only can't handle a certain capacity of vehicle trips. These designs are alternatives that let them delay or put off the eventual installation of traffic signals along major arterial corridors. And that's exactly what they've told us has to be done on this particular case. We really don't have a lot of choice. This wasn't our idea, I want to be clear. We didn't go in and say, hey, we want to do something new and different like they're doing in North Carolina and South Carolina. This is what VDOT came to us and told us we had to do. So we had a traffic signal designed here, had to scrap it and came back and came up with this new design. And as Kimberly said, when the volumes get to a certain level, then they'll have to reanalyze it. And, and it may well be that a traffic signal ends up here or somewhere to the north or slightly off-center, but it will create those interruptions in traffic that will allow people to get out from the site. So as traffic grows, the, the traffic, transportation network design will change and evolve as, as it does everywhere. In this case, we're planning and anticipating that one day there's going to be a signal needed here or somewhere close. And Mr. Hart in, in Virginia Properties has set aside the funding for a traffic signal in this area whenever VDOT tells us that that's what they're, they're going to want in this corridor. Slide, please. Next, yeah. Ms. Palmetto has already pointed out our interparcial connections to the north and to the south. I mentioned one is the cul-de-sac street. We've also created the north-south internal road. We've also created the north-south internal road that will run parallel to Route One. Again, this is another strategy for taking some of the trips off of Route One and allowing local traffic to get to its destinations without having to get out onto the highway. We expect that the properties to the north and south will have similar north-south connector roads, and that will reinforce and establish that parallel road network that is so desired in so many locations. These are the architectural renderings that we have proffered as a part of the rezoning. The question was asked whether or not the, there were elevations for the back of the building. The answer to that is no. We didn't proffer any, we didn't think of it. We do know from experience, however, that realtors are reluctant to have dual fronts because then they have to have registered each door to monitor people going in and out. I'm not sure if that was something that you were thinking of, but the answer unfortunately is no. We didn't do an elevation, didn't think of it, and that's something we can talk about some more. This is an elevation that is proffered for the residential apartments. And I have some examples here, I'm going to show you in a few seconds, that are, that help you interpret the site plan or the G D P along with these elevations because sometimes it's difficult to take these two-dimensional drawings and somehow piece them together in your head and understand exactly how they all fit together and what the appearance of the project will be. This would be the clubhouse for the community. The apartment will have a number of amenities. One of them is a clubhouse with community space. They'll have a bath house, they'll have a swimming pool, and you'll see all of those in additional slides. But you can see from this slide that it is going to be architecturally similar and compatible with the apartment buildings themselves. And the brick there you see will match the commercial. We, I did not point out to you exactly where this is. It's right in the middle of the site. I probably should have pointed that out when we were back on that slide, but we'll keep moving.
Just another minute to wrap up.
Yes, sir. Next slide, please. This is the streetscape, which you've seen before. Next slide, please. And this is one of those renderings that I told you that I would provide that would help you to pull all of the pieces together and then understand what this is going to look like. You see in the very center of the photograph, the one-story clubhouse and pool. Next slide, please. Again, the clubhouse and pool, a little bit lower elevation with the apartments in the back. And here are some interior, well, this is an interior view of the common space within the clubhouse. There will be similar common spaces in some of the, in portions of the apartment area. This is a fitness room. Next slide, please. And this is in the interior of one of the apartment units. And it's just to try to show you the quality, which ties back to the fiscal impact analysis and the demographic that is being sought here. We're seeing more and more now in this market that demographic, the demographics indicate that people are delaying the purchase of the, everyone, you know, the former American dream after post-World War II, to everybody, everybody wanted to own a house, single-family house, own a quarter acre lot. That has changed in the past 10 to 15 years. I have, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have one question. Are these apartments, you're selling these apartments?
No, sir, they are not condominium. They will be rental.
They'll be rental.
Yes, sir, they'll be owned by Bonner Venture and managed by them as well.
You got a range of what the rental prices are?
The rental prices, I'm sorry, I don't. $1,050 for one bedroom, $12 for two, and $1,450 for three.
Thank you.
And there's a maximum of 143 bedrooms. One point that I didn't make, and I apologize for not making it, is that the project will be phased. The first phase will be 200 units. And those will come on within the first two years with the build-out being in four to five years after that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Did I hear correctly, did I hear that you were setting aside money for traffic light?
Yes, sir. That is, that is not a part of the proffered conditions. Under the new Proffer Reform Act, there are limitations on what we can do and can't do. But I just wanted to volunteer that Virginia Properties is anticipating that the traffic, when we go in for our VDOT permits, we have to do whatever VDOT tells us. So this money has been set aside in the event that it's, you know, when we go to get our VDOT permits, they tell us to do a little different design than what we're showing to you today. Or if at some future date, there's an opportunity north.
Any other questions or comments? Very well, we'll open up the public hearing portion of it. The same rules apply with the timing on our monitor there.
The first person to sign up was David Peed, followed by Tracy Perry.
Good evening. I'm, from what I've heard here, oh, Lee Hill District. I live in the South Oaks subdivision. And I'm very concerned about this growth on the Route One corridor in my neighborhood. I can leave my house in South Oaks at any time of the week. Eight o'clock on a Saturday, 11:30 in the afternoon on a Tuesday. It takes 26 to 28 minutes to go approximately 2 and 1/8, 2 and 1/4 miles to get on 95. Okay? Takes forever. Now, I've heard some numbers that did not jive. May I ask the lady that mentioned the impact of the students in the already overcrowded schools? I believe it was 18 or 20 students total. Was that, am I correct? Where did I hear that?
We'll have the applicant readdressed, but can you?
Okay, well, when you have 140 three-bedroom apartments, what does that tell you? Children, right? At least 140 more children. They've got to go to school somewhere. So the number of students I've heard mentioned earlier just mathematically does not jive with reality. I don't think you have enough police, fire and rescue, or even water facilities for all this development. You've got another development that just wrapped up. I don't think anybody's even moved into it. Probably on this catty corner on the other side of Route One. I mean, I don't understand why this whole Route One corridor, the little teeny northeast corner of Spotsylvania County, Massaponix, seems to have 98% of the growth. I do not understand. I really don't. It makes no sense to me. So, you know. Could address other things, but I've got three minutes, so. There it is.
Tracy Perry, followed by Holly, I believe it's Talent.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Tracy Perry. I believe I'm in Lee Hill District. I do live in South Oaks. I'm the Secretary Treasurer of the South Oaks Homeowners Association. I'm really concerned that our constituents in the South Oaks homeowners have not all received this letter. I've talked to a young lady tonight that her neighbor did not receive it. She's a homeowner. So I'm requesting that Spotsylvania County does not vote on this tonight to make sure everybody in South Oaks has been notified, the homeowners and landowners there. Also, I'd like to address the parking, you know, the traffic, as you have seen by your analysis from the developer, of the, making the left-hand turn. They're going to have to go to the northern part of the development. As you know, the Spotsylvania County has already approved the new apartment complex going down there to, going down from Pick-a-Park. You go down there, straight there on the right-hand side. We have not even seen how that's going to, how that is going to impact. I know you had the analysis done when it was approved at the time for the county board. I'm also concerned for the, you've already approved the, I believe, 1,200 units that is around South Oaks already that has not been developed. So I'm requesting that the Board of Supervisors do not vote on this tonight. And I'm requesting that all homeowners in South Oaks have been appropriately notified. I have a question from the developer. When he said South Oak, or South Point, was that South Oaks or was it? Because I'm thinking South Point is north of the developed property. So I'm asking him to clarify what exactly South Point is. I do appreciate the Spotsylvania County for sending me a letter stating that my property is 1,3,000 feet within this development to give me the opportunity to be able to voice my opinion. But again, I'm asking the Board of Supervisors to tally this vote tonight so we can appropriately address the schools, the impact on the schools and the impact on the traffic in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Holly Talent. I also live in South Oaks in the Lee Hill District. My concern is the analysis on the, on the traffic impact. You're adding the new apartment complexes already that have started, and you're, they propose to put this experimental traffic pattern in already. I know our family has already been impacted of a head-on collision in that same area within the past two years due to the poor planning of the traffic anyway. My other concern is in the school system, is I do have small children that will be going into the school system. Putting in apartment complexes does not generate the personal property tax that drives the growth in providing the schools and providing the teachers, the expansion. Once you do that, you're getting into the sports. You're adding additional athletic trainers to the area. And so where does that revenue come from? And you're not putting that into apartments. You have the lack of vested interest from the families that live in it versus the families that purchase in the area. You know, my family has a vested interest in the community and to the proper growth into it and the expansion into it. And you bring in all this lack of vested interest into these apartments. They could care less. They're going to, they're going to come in, they're going to destroy it, they're going to leave. And I think you need to take that in consideration. They're not going to put in monetaries into this community like if you put in single-family homes.
David Dobson.
Mr. Chairman and the board, I'd just like to give my comments based on actually being here and developing here. I'm the owner of Jackson Village, which of course has the apartments with the lady just mentioned. The thing that worries me is this. When you approved Jackson Village, as you approved Alexander's Crossing, Heritage Woods, as well as H.H. Hunt, you required very drastic proffers and very drastic additions to the benefits of taxpayers in this county. For example, the very day I started anything on Jackson Village, the county got a cash check from me for $1 million. It wasn't $40,000. It wasn't $101. We've got 135 apartments there, and you've received, the county has, and the taxpayers have received over $2 million. And we're just getting started. Part of that will go to the no-kill animal shelter, plus the schools, plus police, plus EMS, plus water and sewer. We're good citizens here. We're giving a lot of cash, and we've already done it. We're not stopping here. Now, we also have a requirement to put a substantial amount of commercial. We can't do any more residential unless we do that commercial. The commercial drives the engine. It provides tax revenue, it provides services, it provides jobs. We've done over 300 jobs alone at Jackson Village, and we're not stopping there. We're going to bring more jobs, we're going to bring more commercial development. So my point is, if you look at this application, they don't even have to do one square foot of commercial. They can do it, but they're not required to. They don't have to do any of it before they do all of their residential. Now, the Board of Supervisors has always required that commercial be part of every project. That it be done in tandem specifically with residential. And it says, don't do any more residential past the number X, Y, Z unless you first do that commercial. None of that, none of that is in these, in these conditions. And that's not right because you need the tax revenue. The county, taxpayers, and voters depend on the services and the tax revenue, and it's a good thing to give those. I didn't like the package that I had. I didn't like everything. I thought it was fair. I thought it was balanced. And to quote Donald Trump, which may not be popular in this era, you can't have a China taking everything for free and then everybody else in America paying the tab for all of their tariffs. It's not fair. You need fair business level, fair business conditions. It's not a question of tilting to one side or the next. It's a question of balancing it out. So yes, this is good, what is happening in the county. We are bringing-
Thank you, your time is up, thank you.
Thank you. Excitement and services, we want to continue to be a part. We ask, you simply ask, that the others do their fair share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all that signed up.
Would anybody else wish us to speak?
Hello, my name is Kristi Toos. I'm also part of the Lee's Hills District in the South Oaks area. I just want to concur with what a few previous people had said about the schools. I have one, one child in Massaponix, one child in Spotsylvania. One of my daughters already attends some of her classes in trailers, and they have just got rid of all the lockers. So I'm concerned about the overcapacity for sure. The other thing is, I was interested about the commercial and what's going to go in there and how they base the traffic off of that. If we don't know what type of commercial is coming in there, how can you establish what kind of traffic? I mean, if you have a grocery store versus like a mattress store, I'm looking at, because, you know, I'm living right there. We're already, you know, when you turn out left on a Route One, you already have a ton of traffic, as the person before me said. Do, is there any type of, are there parameters for this commercial? Types of businesses that are coming in at all? I mean, the type, is there at all? Right, I mean, that's going to affect traffic big time, you know? Traffic going into Walmart versus traffic going into, you know, the Sealy Posturpedic is going to be very different. So I don't know, was that part of the development plan?
We'll give the, address the commission, please, and we'll give the applicant a chance to respond.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
So if you finish up your comments and then we'll let them-
Okay, okay, yeah. So I'm curious to see what type of commercials coming in there. I also just want to express my concern also for overcapacity and the type of money that's also going into parks and recs. I don't feel that there's already enough offered to our youth. Bringing in, like they were saying, three bedrooms means more children. I think that we should offer more services, so. I guess that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kim Hoffman, and I'm also one of the Lee's Hill voters. And I also am a direct neighbor on Route One. And my question is, you're saying that there is 1,000 feet of road improvements being done, but your frontage is only X number. Where does your extension go and whose property do you take for it? That's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Anyone else at this point? Okay, thank you very much. We'll have the applicant wishes to address some of the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've tried to keep track of the questions and I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability. If I miss anything, someone, please feel free to remind me and I'll come back to it and make sure that we do respond. The, with respect to the number of the student generation, we have utilized the student generation figures that are provided to us from the county. And they've received them from the schools division, I'm sure. Right now, what the schools are indicating is that multifamily development generates about .05 students per dwelling unit. So if you have, in this overall 400-unit project, we're looking at approximately 70 total students at the elementary, middle school, and high school levels. The areas that are currently having capacity issues are at the middle school and the high school level. One of the reasons that we're not able to proffer any sort of monetary contribution to offset that, and monetary contributions were mentioned, is that in 2016, the general- the General Assembly passed a legislation that said that there is a proffer, they called it the Proffer Reform Act, or that's the way it was referred to now. And what that says is, is if the county doesn't have a CIP project that identifies exactly where those funds are going, or if they can't otherwise reasonably demonstrate that these funds are needed to, to offset a cost or to be addressed through cost offsets, then the applicant is not able to proffer it and so, and, and the county is not able to accept it. So right now, the county and, and these applicants are kind of struggling with this new legislation and making sure that we do not do anything that runs afoul of the state code. When Mr. Dobson came in with his rezoning, he had a very different set of circumstances and we quite frankly would not be permitted by the county to proffer the types of funding and contributions that he spoke of earlier. The, the number of students that are being generated at the high school level is 20 and the number of students at the middle school level, excuse me, is 15. The project is going to be phased. There'll be a Phase 1 and Phase 2. The first phase will be 200 units. The next phases will be 150 to 200 units. The, the number of high school that'll have an immediate impact with, you know, over the next two years as the first phase is constructed would be 10 high school students that would be added to the current enrollment. Through, if you look at the county's school districts, and no one likes to hear this, but if you look at the county's schools districts, there is capacity at the high school level in Spotsylvania County. So through moving students around, you could actually meet the, the standards that Spotsylvania has set for its schools. I'm not sure what Mr. Thompson was referring to as far as some misinformation or some students that weren't actually going to Spotsylvania, if I understood them correctly, that were reassigned to somewhere else.
This came to my attention that the students registered in the high schools don't necessarily attend school on that campus. They attend classes somewhere else, governor's schools, special schools. And, but this figure on this, on this tally I got here says all of them are in this one building, which makes them 197 overcapacity. Well, they're not even that building. And I want an absolute correct accounting for these students because this piece of paper is misleading.
It's very understandable. We would like to see that as well. Another comment that was made had to do with, with the amount of traffic that would be generated by this proposal. When, when we do a traffic impact analysis, and we had a complete one done for this case, it was required by VDOT, we have to include background traffics just so that the general public knows. All of the currently approved development and the ongoing development that was, that exists in this corridor was added to the TIA that we prepared. So someone asked a question about whether Orchard Ridge had been taken into consideration and the answer is yes, absolutely. It was included in our TIA, as were the, the background traffic that is assumed to accumulate. So VDOT will normally assume that 2% per year is traffic growth in every corridor, even if you, you are not naming a specific development or a specific development hasn't been identified in that area. The, the Virginia Department of Transportation does a very, very good job for, for the public. And most people don't realize it. It's a very technical manual or report that they require from us and we think that it's very thorough. And I, I think that everyone's concerns would be addressed if they, if they were familiar with that document.
Just a few more seconds.
Yes, sir. Types of commercial, I did want to touch on that. Types of commercial are regulated in several ways, one by the requirements of the zoning ordinance, so there are limited number of uses that are permitted in this zone because of the zoning regulation, the normal zoning regulations. We've proffered out a few more things that we don't think are neighborhood appropriate. But more than anything, the size of the property and the dimensions of the building control the type of commercial uses that you will have on this property. And if you look at the buildings that we have proffered, their elevations and their footprints and the space that they have, they are not gonna be Walmarts, they're not gonna be grocery stores because we've, we've proffered a maximum of 40,000 square feet and most grocery stores today are a minimum of 30,000, even if you're looking at Lidl. If you look at a Walmart, it's 40 to 60,000 square feet. So those uses are not going to be located on this property.
Thank you. I do have one, one question though, I'd like you to clarify. I want to be sure I understand this, that you have one developer for the residential part of this project and then you have a separate developer for the commercial?
Yes, sir. Currently in the, in the business and the industry, you will rarely find a developer that builds both.
So in terms of phasing, there's nothing to prohibit the, I, I would assume that the commercial developer is as motivated to start the commercial development phase of this as the residential?
Yes, sir. When I mentioned that Virginia Properties was sharing in the costs, one of the major costs will be the improvements to Route 1 and the internal road system. And when that road system is constructed, what you will have in the front of this property is commercial-ready pad sites. And so they will be fully developed and ready to be turned over to an end user. So the commercial developer in sharing in those costs is very motivated to bring those up as quickly as possible. Part of the reasons that businesses will be drawn there will be because of the residential population and that will depend on the construction of the apartments. So the two things go hand in hand. They really fit hand in glove.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments at this point for the applicant? Nothing? All right. At this point, you know, we'll, we'll close the public hearing. If we don't have any other questions or comments, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the application with the proffers and conditions listed in the executive summary in the application. The, the project is in an area that we want this type of growth. The mixed-use development is a great application for this area, so I would, I'm gonna make a motion to, to approve the application. Can I have a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So we have a 2-2 vote, the motion does not pass. So the application is, is, does not pass. I would, I would remind everybody that this application goes to the Board of Supervisors. Point of clarification is this is the Planning Commission, not the Board of Supervisors. And this application goes before the Board of Supervisors with a no recommendation. So with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Special use permit SUP 18-005.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request to amend the existing special use permit to allow for the relocation and the expansion of a school building and ball fields. The Fredericksburg Christian School is currently located at 9400 Thornton-Rolling Road and includes grades 6 through 12 with some existing ball fields and parking areas. Currently, the Fredericksburg Christian School Elementary School is located in the city of Fredericksburg off Lafayette. So with this special use permit amendment, this would create an additional building for the additional, or for the elementary school to relocate that facility to the same campus. Along with the new school building, there would be additional ball fields as well. Staff is recommending approval with the recommended conditions. Here's a zoning map with the property outlined in red. The property totals over 75 acres and is comprised of two separate tax parcels. The property is currently zoned rural and surrounded primarily by other rural zoned property. Immediately adjacent to the south is a large lot subdivision. Those lots range, average five acres. The property to the west is vacant and currently zoned industrial. Of course, further north here to the west is the Mixed Juice Project, known as Crossroads Station, and of course the VRE as well. The property to the north is zoned rural and is currently undeveloped. And the property across Thornton-Rolling Road is zoned rural and is actually in a conservation easement. Here's an aerial photo with the property outlined there for you. You can see the existing school campus with two access points, including right-turn lanes on Thornton-Rolling Road. There's ball fields on the property. As I said, the property is currently, two separate parcels with the back half remaining undeveloped currently. This project is approximately half mile south from the intersection of Route 17 and Thornton-Rolling. You can also notice on this image that there's a 50-foot vegetated buffer along the entire property line. This was a result of a previous condition and you'll see how that translates with the proposed improvements here on their generalized development plan. Shaded in yellow is the proposed elementary school building, which is one-story and over 48,000 square feet. There will be additional parking area here at the front as well as an extension of the perimeter road that will go behind the existing school building, behind the proposed building and loop around to the parking area. The building is placed where there's currently a baseball field. That baseball field will be relocated along with additional ball fields here on the rear portion of the property. The access road will be extended as well to the ball fields along with additional parking area. You will see in the dark green outline of the property, that's the existing buffer which will be maintained. The 50-foot buffer that's currently along the frontage is going to be impacted with the installation of an asphalt trail. This trail will be 10 feet in width, so it is gonna reduce the buffer in some areas. Some areas it'll remain 50, but it doesn't reduce any less than 25 feet in some portions. This trail is a integral segment of the county's master trail plan as well as the route of the East Coast Greenways. And you had included in your packet a letter, a letter of support from the East Coast Greenways with this proposal of the, of the trail installation. The property is currently served by public utilities as well as the addition. They are showing potential stormwater facilities on the property and those details are, would be of course worked out and flushed out during the site plan review process. This is an architectural rendering the applicant has provided for the elementary school building. You'll see the colors and materials. There's metal paneling in a sand buff color with split-faced cement block. There is some brick detail, there's green trim. All of these materials and colors are consistent with the existing school building on the campus. Thornton-Rolling Road is a two-lane rural curvy road which is currently all within prescriptive right-of-way. Traffic and safety concerns were raised by the community and staff primarily relating to the level of service at the Route 17 intersection and the impact that this additional traffic will have on Thornton-Rolling Road, which is currently in poor condition with a lot of pothole patching and narrow conditions. Thornton-Rolling Road and the Route 17 intersection currently operate at a level of service F from the southbound approach, so that's from Thornton-Rolling Road at the intersection. There are improvements, VDOT is completing those improvements now that would include, that do include additional turn lanes and the installation of a traffic signal. That signal should be operational in just a matter of weeks. With the installation of the signal, the level of service is expected to improve to an E, to a C. The proposed school building along with the existing campus will total, generate a total of 1,757 vehicles per day. The net increase with the, with the proposed school building is approximately 700 net increased vehicles per day. The applicant explains that this is a worst-case scenario as it doesn't account for the school's bus system. They have children that are, ride the bus from surrounding counties, King George, Caroline, Louisa. I'm sorry, I'm just noticing on my slide that my image got shifted a bit. But on the, the red line was supposed to follow the segment, this segment of Thornton-Rolling Road from the south of Patriot Lane all the way to the intersection. This was to denote the applicant's proposed improvements to Thornton-Rolling, which include a one-and-a-half-inch asphalt overlay as well as, most of this road is sharp ditch lines. There are some existing shoulders and so where there are existing shoulders, they would also be paving those as well. The two points of access that are existing are right-turn lanes, have right-turn lanes and tapers. Those are adequate to accommodate the additional traffic. And the applicant has also adopted an internal traffic pattern as well as staggered dismissal and arrival times for their lower and upper school to avoid any risk of traffic backing up into those turn lanes and ultimately into Thornton-Rolling Road. Key findings identified by staff in favor include that the proposal is consistent and compatible with the development district and the land use designation per the comprehensive plan and also brings in additional investment and educational options to the county which are currently operating in another jurisdiction. The applicant is providing right-of-way along Thornton-Rolling Road and providing an integral segment of trail consistent with the county's master trail plan and the East Coast Greenway. The proposal also provides an overlay and a paving place, that's the pavement of those shoulders, improvement to the Thornton-Rolling Road which will significantly improve the condition of the road and mitigate this project's physical impacts with the additional traffic. Findings against is that this proposed addition will generate a net increase in traffic of 774 vehicles per day on Thornton-Rolling Road, which is currently a rural two-lane road. Based on the findings in favor just presented, staff is recommending approval with recommended conditions, the first being that the property would be developed in conformance with the GDP, that all of the landscaping buffers would be maintained as identified on the GDP, that the improvements on Thornton-Rolling Road, including the asphalt overlay and the paving place, that they would be completed as part of the site plan process for the school building addition, that the applicant dedicate right-of-way along Thornton-Rolling Road identified on the GDP, which is currently in prescriptive right-of-way. And the elementary school building shall be constructed in conformance with the architectural rendering. I will note that we have, did receive a concern related to the posting of the property. The requirement is that the property be posted with a public hearing notice sign no less than 15 days prior to the public hearing. There was a concern raised that that was not done. And before you tonight, I did make a copy. We do have an affidavit and a picture that attests that the property was posted on July 3rd, which meets that 15-day requirement, so I just wanted to, to let you know that. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kim?
Can you explain a little bit more about the East Coast Greenway Alliance and this trail is nowhere really? I mean, we've talked about this on other properties around the county. I'm just kind of curious as to what the benefit would be for the county to have this trail in place for such a small segment? That I'm reading here on their, their, their letter for support talking about cycling and things of that nature. I just don't see anybody cycling down Thornton-Rolling with just that one little segment. In fact, I wouldn't want to encourage anybody cycling down Thornton-Rolling with just that segment. So I'm kind of curious about what, what the county's goal is. I understand what East Coast Greenway's alliance goal is, but what's, what's the county's goal when it comes to that trail system and what, you know, gets the car line pretty quick there? I know it's part of the regional idea, but what, just kind of curious about that.
Well, and the county's master trail plan is consistent with that East Coast Greenway. That is their adopted route down Thornton-Rolling. And I agree, it's narrow and it's curvy and it's rural, but that is where they're directing cyclists and pedestrians down that route. So this is one segment of the trail. And typically, or in cases where we can get portions of the trail built with development, we always encourage that. There is expected additional development. I would, I would think along Thornton-Rolling, there's vacant land that, where we can see additional portions of the trail to be constructed. There's also, the trail does go up Tidewater Trail. We have We have a site plan under review right now where they'll be building a portion of the trail as well. So it is a piecemeal fashion, but when we have the opportunity, we do always encourage take advantage of that.
That development, so those vacant lots, for example, of land, residential unit by right goes in there. Nothing really could happen at that point. They would have to, I don't know if the county would want to take that land to then build this, probably not, but you would need more development, something like this, a special use permit or a rezoning of some sort to come in to help extend that greenway.
Because that property is zoned rural, we're going to be looking at probably large lot development. But even so, even so, when they come in for subdivision, there are sidewalk requirements there. In those cases, we would certainly encourage a trail in lieu of a sidewalk.
Okay. I'm just curious in general, because this comes up on other cases, and I'm always curious about, you know, I think of the Battle Store, the country store out there, and, you know, there was some talks about, hey, do they need to put this or not put this? And what's it connecting to? And I'm just kind of curious overall. Thanks.
I have one for you. Kim, you mentioned VDOT, what they were planning to do out there. When? And where are we with that?
It's currently under construction, and it's-
Now, I know the light, okay. I'm familiar with that. But how about the road itself? I mean, in the Thornton-Rolling Drive Road that goes to the school? Who's planning to do something with that?
So the VDOT improvements were only for the intersection and creating those additional turn lanes. The applicant for this project is agreeing to do a 1-1/2-inch asphalt overlay from south of their project to meet with the improvements at the intersection. No widening. It'll be an asphalt overlay to improve the condition of that road. Like I said, it's a lot of ditch sections there-
Yeah, I know.
-with no shoulders. Where there are shoulders, this improvement that would pave those shoulders, but no widening.
But paving those shoulders, are you stating that it would make it wider there?
In those sections, yes, ma'am. It gives a little extra cushion.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Kim? The applicant here wishes to present.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Rick Yost. I'm the superintendent of Freshburg Christian School, and I appreciate you all hearing our application tonight and appreciate your service to our community as well. That means a lot to us. Our school has been in the Freshburg area for 40 years now. Next year, we'll celebrate our 40th year. It was founded by Mr. and Mrs. Gary Foss. Some of you have known the Fosses, and it's always been a dream of theirs and of ours to consolidate our campuses in Spotsylvania County. So in 1995, we were able to purchase that 75 acres out there on Thornton-Rolling Road. That was always the dream, that all of our campuses would be in one place. So we're grateful for the opportunity. My colleague, Dave Richardson with Webb and Associates, is going to share some more of the details, but I just wanted to let you know that the Fosses started the school because God told them to, and we're here. Our mission is to serve the community, to serve the families in the community, and we feel like that we do that in a lot of different ways. Our students are, in fact, required to do mission and community service hours as part of our curriculum at our school, so that's done a lot. And as well, we have students from about 10 different counties, but the grand preponderance are students in Spotsylvania County, so I hope we can do something to help relieve some of the pressure in the schools and to serve more families as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have after Mr. Richardson's done. Thank you.
Chairman, members of the commission, I'm David Richardson with Webb and Associates, also a resident of Spotsylvania County in Lee Hill District. Just wanted to say thank you, and this has been a long time coming, not due to staff, but to us, and a lot has happened. If you look at the community meeting, it was actually 2017, about this time last year. So we're just now getting to this point. A lot of things have happened through that process, where we were talking about land swapping with an adjacent owner for ball fields, things like that, and the plan that you have before you is what has developed from all of these trials and tribulations, so to speak. I do want to thank Kimberly for the presentation. Wanda, I want to thank you for your staff. Even though I don't agree with Kimberly all the time, she's always very nice to me and gets me to see her way. She has that ability. Since she did a good job, I'm not going to get into technical stuff. I just want to talk a little bit about the school myself. The last case that we had up here, one of the great things about this is we have opportunities, different options for school. People coming into the county, they have options of private schools. We have not only Fredericksburg Christian, but FA and other Christian schools. So it's good to have that opportunity to give people options on schooling. Also, the last case talking about overcrowding of the schools, that is a true thing. I have a son at Mass Monics High School. He classifies going through the hallways like being a cow being herded into a pen. It's not good there. He goes to Spotsy for governor's school. He says it's a completely different atmosphere there. So we have the crowding in some schools and not in others. One of the things that was probably the toughest decision for the school was what to do with Thornton-Rolling Road. There was a lot of things thrown out there and what we could do to make it better. Of course, we have student drivers on it, the buses, and the parents coming in, and the option that we have before you is pretty much the only thing we can do, and it is a big venture. If you look at the amount of asphalt on that road, it's probably as much, if not more, than all of the parking lots and interior roads of the site. So we're doing what we can on that. And just another thing on the applicant, as the engineer, when Kimberly told me, we originally showed the pavement going to the far end of the taper of our southern entrance, and she said, "Bring it to your property line." My opinion was why? And when I brought it to the applicant, they said, "Why don't we go past the adjacent subdivision and pave in front of their road as well?" So I just wanted to leave you with how they are towards the community. Write this down and check it out. Matthew 5, verse 41. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? I'll open up the, thank you. I'll open up the hearing for public comment. Anybody wishes to speak? State your name and voting district.
Johnson District, James, Charlotte 605, Montrose Drive. I talked to this gentleman here back here about a year ago, and Mr. Garrison was at the school. This road is terrible, and they're talking about this lane being an easement. I own 14 acres across the road from it. My son owns the lane, and my stepson owns the lane. None of that lane's an easement. That's wrong. They talk about the shoulders of the road. It's not a place on that road you can pull off and get your car completely off the road. You might get off it two or three foot, because Sheriff, you know that. Let me tell you something. This is a dangerous road, and I wish y'all would table this night and go down there and watch the traffic backed up when that school lets out and go put another school out with another four or five hundred kids. It's wrong. I can see if you widen your road, get the curves out of it. When you built the first school, I come here, I come to the hospital, John Toplin's Hospital. I'd had surgery. I come home on Sunday, on Tuesday, and I come up here and spoke in favor of it. It was total difference in dealing with him and the people that run it now. They're not going to widen the road, take none of the curves. Hell, you go run all that traffic through there with them kids. It's no way. I wish y'all would go down in the summer, in the afternoon, and watch the traffic back up. I appreciate anything you can do to help the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Naomi Duggins. I'm in the Berkeley District, I believe, right off of Riverside Farm Lane. I wasn't really planning on speaking, but I just do want to let you know I'm a parent. I have two kids that go to the school now and a third in a few years. The school's been a huge blessing to me. We're right now kind of crammed in a church right now on Route 1. We go there in spite of that building, and this is something that every parent that goes to that school is dreaming of and cannot wait to happen, so that we can all be in a very safe, you know, school, just like people who go to public schools want a nice building that accommodates their students and in a safe manner. I also went to Fredericksburg Christian School and graduated several years ago. But as a teenager, yes, the road is windy and curvy, but I will say that I paid attention when I was on that road versus a nice straight road that you can just fly down as a teenager. So there is that, but I do understand their concerns, but this is definitely, we're giving our all, parents of the school are actually giving money even to support the construction of this building. So it's something that we want and we appreciate, and it's God-given, and we really appreciate your time and consideration to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. One for the applicant. How many students are driving on a daily basis to the school?
I don't have that exact number, sir, but it's our ninth through 12th graders, and only a fraction of those drive because we do have buses. So in ninth through 12, we have about 200-plus students, 250 students in ninth through 12. So of those, not even half of those drive, so 100 or so students. That was all, I think we figured all that out with some of the traffic studies that we did, but that would be an approximate estimate.
Thank you, thank you. The second is, Kimberly, do we have anything from the engineer, from the county engineer, from the sheriff's office about accidents there?
In her report, it stated, I only know that because I read it this morning, the accidents reported are actually in the intersection of Route 17 and Thornton-Rolling Road. So that's being addressed with the new traffic lights and turn lanes. It has been a very bad intersection by all means.
Correct. I understand that. I'm curious about between the traffic light and the school on Thornton-Rolling Road. We don't have anything on that.
Sheriff, I can tell you, after 20, I've been there 20 years, the years that the school opened in 1997 on that site, we've only had two student accidents on the road where they went off the road. We've never had an accident with an injury there. One time, somebody was rear-ended in front of the school because somebody came around, but there was a turn there and rear-ended somebody that was on the road. But beyond that, the only accidents have been involving school families. That's all I can tell you in those 20 years. That's been it.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Yes, Ms. Carter?
I want to address the transportation issue one more time. I know that to get that light there, of course, that's a subdivision that's going in that area, a very small one, but in order to even get VDOT to agree for that traffic light to be there, I had to go physically get VDOT employees from Richmond to come up here and sit there at that time to get that traffic light. And finally, we got that traffic light. Now, that road is very crooked, and the reason that I went as far as I did because of the traffic light was I wanted to keep those students safe and with the parents also. But what bothers me that I have always been right up front and positive with the Christian school and will always be. But what bothers me is who's going to really work hard for this road to be improved from the Virginia Department of Transportation? You know? That's the reason I asked you that at first. I know firsthand how long it took me and what it took to get that traffic light there. And if we're not persistent in what is needed in that area, then it never gets done, and that certainly is an issue that has to be looked at, really. I hope that our transportation people will just go down and take a picture of that road and present it to the board of supervisors and ask them to please put that as a high priority on their transportation list. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll close the public hearing part of this. Any further discussion? I'll take a motion on the project.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve special use permit 18-005 with the recommended conditions as outlined by county staff.
Can I have a second on the motion? I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I will vote for the project, but I would like to also include in the motion that this area to be studied immediately to improve the conditions of Thornton-Rolling Drive for safety factors, and there might be safety funds out there that maybe the county can receive at this time. And so I'd be like, if I could, to put this in as part of the motion. Can I not do that?
I'm going to turn to my-
There is a motion on the table, and Ms. Carter, if you are asking if the person who made the motion will accept your amendment to it as a friendly amendment, you may. He may then say yes or no. If he does, it'll be voted on as part of the entire amendment. If he says no, then your amendment to his motion will actually get voted on first.
So you wish to make this a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Could you repeat your-
Repeat the friendly amendment?
Your amendment?
That a recommendation to the board of supervisors that this area to be studied and be a high priority of a transportation issue in the county to be improved. I didn't say they'd have to do it. I said, "Study it, please, to look at it."
Can we discuss this?
Yes.
Okay. I agree with you 100%, but can we vote on this special use permit and then come back if you want to send something to the board, ask them to look at that, rather than being part of this? I mean-
What's the difference?
Well, I don't know if it is. I don't even know if, I mean, you're just asking the board to look at something. It really doesn't have anything to do with part of this application.
A recommendation, doesn't it?
I don't think, I mean, I-
We can take this issue up on a new business and provide a separate motion.
This is also a special use permit, though, so you could make recommendations based on-
That's what I thought. That's what I thought.
Okay, all right. Okay, I agree.
You said that.
So it'll be part of the motion. Can you reread the motion? Somebody read back the motion for me.
Oh, my goodness. Go ahead.
Give it a whirl.
Ms. Carter would like to add-
Ms. Carter would like to add that, um, there'd be a recommendation that this area be studied as a high priority. Um, uh, send that to the board of supervisors and see if there's any safety funds out there that can be used for the study.
Beautifully done.
High priority as to the Virginia Department of Transportation? High, it, it was unclear as to a high priority to whom in that, in the readback.
I thought you did say.
Studied as a high priority? Um, would that be VDOT study it or?
No, county.
County staff?
Yes.
Okay.
I think I'm clear. Okay. All right, so we have the motion on the table. Do we have a second on that? I seconded it.
You seconded it.
So I'll second the-
I always have to do his vote.
Right, I'll second the motion. All, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes, thank you. All right, so we move on to the next item on the agenda. Uh, CA eighteen dash triple zero two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is part of the ongoing updates to the zoning ordinance. Uh, the section before you this evening is related to zoning map amendments or rezonings. The majority of the amendments that are, um, in your packet are editorial grammatical in nature. Uh, there is one substantive change proposed, and that's the addition of subsection C under twenty-three dash four point six point three proffer of conditions. And the purpose in adding this subsection is to establish requirements related to the dedication of land to the county during a rezoning project to ensure that the dedicated land is usable and fairly valued. This subsection was added in response to concerns being raised about the value attributed to land dedications during the rezoning process and whether the county was receiving land that can be used for its intended purpose. Um, so with that, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions, comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Wanda, so with that, when would somebody under current proffer laws donate land? When can they donate land? Because it can't be land anymore, correct, for residential? So this would only apply to a commercial rezoning?
Well, it, it can. There, there could be situations where land is, is donated. For example, um, if there was gonna be a small pocket park, say, that for a large development, you know, there, there is the potential out there. I say it is, I would say it is much reduced under the new proffer law, but I, I think there are still situations, um, where it could occur. And it's also, I think, a good thing to have this in here now because the state code could change again in the future, and at least then, we're, we're ahead of the game.
Any other questions or comments for Wanda? So, uh, so what are we doing? Are we, you need a motion on this?
Uh, we need to open the public hearing.
Okay, yes, very good. So we'll open the public hearing on this application. Anybody wish to speak to it? Very well, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion? So we will need a motion to approve.
I move to approve, and I'd like to say I'm glad this has finally come to fruition. I saw the last piece of land that I wanna see that wasn't worth anything, and I'm glad we're gonna add this. Thank you.
Very well, any other, uh, to, kind of a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor say, well, Ms. Carter disappeared on me. We have a quorum. Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. We'll move on to CA eighteen dash triple zero three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, again, this is another zoning update, uh, similar to the last one. Uh, this one is related to the site plan review section of the zoning ordinance. Again, there are a number of grammatical, uh, updates that are in there, but we do include definitions pertaining to the types of site plans. Uh, currently, the way our ordinance is structured, we acknowledge site, site plans in a very general way. Um, and what we're doing is we're defining various types because there are different levels of effort associated with different types, and that corresponds to the fees that we charge. The amendment clearly states that site plan review fees must be paid in full within six months of approval of the plan, or the plan will be void, and that any required public easements must be recorded prior to issuance of a final zoning certification occupancy permit. Um, so those are the majority of the, the substantive changes within that section of the ordinance. And I did wanna just note that, um, we did include as part of the cleanup, since we had the definition section of the zoning ordinance open, we wanted to clarify the definition of applicant because previously or currently, it's, it relates to telecommunication facilities.
Right.
And so we made it general in nature. Um, and then we also redefined open space so that we could be consistent with the Code of Virginia and their cluster, uh, subdivision prevention, or provisions. So that's to bring that definition in line with the Code of Virginia.
Thank you. Wanda, any questions from Wanda? Any comments? I will open the public hearing. Any questions or comments? I'll close the public hearing. Uh, any few, uh, additional discussion? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Have a second? All right, very well. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is new business. Any new business? Any, uh, public comment on, uh, anything outside of what we discussed this evening?
Yes, I have one other thing. I've already tasked Wanda to do a job, but, uh, I know we've brought up this mixed use thing before.
Yes.
And I don't know where we went with it, but I'd like to readdress it with the intent of modifying it to some fashion.
Yep. Leon's back there in the, in the back of the room, and, and that's something that he's working on.
Oh, right.
And, uh-
Thank you.
So, yes, it, it is, it is on our task list.
Thank you so much.
Any other new business or public comment? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
Any discussion on that one?
Probably not.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Richard, I wanna see you.